Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, October 6, 2020, and I'd like to welcome you to the Pittsburgh City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I'd ask that Councillor Boishman please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Boishman. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call?
Following councillors have logged in and are present at this evening's meeting: President Kuschemerik, Councillor Boishman, Councillor Kucher, Councillor Dean Natale, Councillor Fleming, Councillor Green, Councillor Schultz, Councillor Squalia, Councillor Van Hazinga, and Councillor Walsh.
Next with a motion for suspension of the rules, Councillor Walsh. You are muted.
Whoops.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you. I move suspension of the rules of this body or our parliamentary authority that are inconsistent with either their remote participation format or guidelines of the state concerning remote participation during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. We'll do this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Councillor Boishman.
Yes.
Councillor Kucher. Councillor Dean Natale.
Yes.
Councillor Fleming.
Yes.
Councillor Green.
Yes.
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Squalia.
Yay. Can you hear me? Yay?
We can hear you.
Councillor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kuschemerik?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Unanimous motion carries. I know, Councillor Kucher, I know you're experiencing some audio issues. If you could call in. If not, for the time being, we'll do the thumbs up, thumbs down if that works for you until... Okay. Excellent. Roll with the punches here. First, communications, first from his honor, the mayor. We have three letters of appointments this evening before us. The first is for Mr. Grant H. Jensen as a full-time police officer for the city of Pittsburgh. The second of Mr. Ralph Baker as a temporary member of the Conservation Commission. That's simply a communication because it's a temporary appointment. And the third as Mr. Ralph Baker as a member of the Conservation Commission. All those stand referred to the Appointments Commission, Appointments Committee, excuse me. We also received communications from the Pension Reserves Investment Management Board, as well as an additional communication from the Town of Douglas Office of Selectmen, both placed on file in the City Clerk's office unless there is any further concerns, seeing none are so referred. And then we also received two late communications, too late to be placed on the agenda councillors, so they'll serve as either late communications or reminders to this body. The first is addressed Monday, October 5, 2020, to the Pittsburgh City Council. Dear City Council members, the Pittsburgh Cultural Council, part of the Massachusetts Cultural Council, would like to express our gratitude to the mayor's office for our positions. The current local cultural council is made up of the following members: Audrey Pendleton Chow, who's administrator, James Craig and his treasurer, Tamara Russell Brown, Social Media Chair, Eileen Berger, Grant Coordinator, Seem Goodlett, Secretary, Angel Melendez, Cassandra Taylor, Claudia Stevens, Jesse Olson, Leona Wetzel, Matt Brune, Miriam Ruiz, and Nayelis Torres. On October 1, we entered our grant cycle. The Massachusetts Cultural Council Grant Cycle opened on October 1 and will close on November 16, 2020. We encourage City Council members to remind their constituents of the local cultural council's ability to fund local arts and cultural events and projects. Last year, we received just over $40,000 from the state. While we do not yet know our allotment for this cycle, we trust it will not be extremely similar from what it was last year. Please consider our role in the creative economy in the city of Pittsburgh and encourage any organizations or individuals to participate in this grant cycle for the benefit of the entire Pittsburgh community. Our next meeting is Tuesday, October 20 at 4:30 PM on Zoom via FATV, and we encourage everyone to join us. Thank you for thinking of us in advance for your attention to this matter. Most sincerely, the Pittsburgh Cultural Council, and I thank Tamara Russell Brown for sending that communication to this body. And then we also received a communication, this is forward to us by the mayor's office, addressed, this dated October 5, 2020, addressed to the Honorable City Council. Dear City Council President Kuschemerik, last year, the Pittsburgh Holiday Lighting Display along Main Street in the Upper Commons looked fantastic. This was made possible with the generous contributions and overwhelming community support of our sponsorship drive. Plans are underway to have another spectacular display this year, and we are hoping the City Council will help us make this happen by sharing information with the public. Any contributions to the holiday lights will be posted on the city's Facebook page. Donors of $200 or more will be recognized on a banner that will be on display in the Upper Commons for the length of the holiday season. If anyone would like to donate this year's holiday lights, please reach out to me, Bill McSheehy, at 508-331-4988. Thank you with warmest regards. And that concludes our communications. Both of those will be placed on file in the City Clerk's office. And next we have... Next, we have a report from the Records Committee. Councillor Squalia.
We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Do I have a motion and seconds to accept the Committee on Records report?
Yes.
Unless there is objection, we'll adopt this by unanimous consent. Seeing no such objection, we will adopt by unanimous consent. Next, we have the oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening, took up the following matter, meeting of October 6, 2020: Reappointment Building Commissioner Term to Expire October 1, 2023 of Mr. Mark Arbodoro, and that was adopted unanimously.
Motion to accept?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report. Speaking on the motion, unless there is any objection, we'll adopt by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is adopted. City Property Committee Oral Report, meeting of October 6, 2020. I believe Councillor Squalia chaired this for Councillor Zarella, who is the chair of that committee, and to our viewing audience, Councillor Zarella is not with us this evening because he and his wife Elizabeth are now proud new parents as of just shortly ago. So I want to congratulate Councillor Zarella and his wife Elizabeth on their newborn baby. And I want to thank Councillor Squalia for stepping in to chair the committee.
Sure. Thanks. So the City Property Committee met this evening at 6:39 PM, and we took up one matter, 190-20, ordered that authorizing the city of Pittsburgh to accept the donation of a certain property known as the Dimick Property located off Grimes Road in Hubbardston, Mass, as outlined in the enclosed order. That was approved 4-2-0 unanimously. And petition 04620 remains on the table.
Do I have a motion for the property?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve the City Property Committee report. Speaking on the motion, unless there is objection, we'll adopt by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is adopted. Orders Finance, and I would ask FATV if we could bring in Tom Skorowski, who is requesting suspension of the rules on 205.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I'm also asking for suspension if it's okay with the chair of Finance from 205 to 209.
Hi. So, Councillor Dean Natale.
I would prefer to have a regular meeting. I did not notify anybody that I was going to be doing suspension, who would be on the agenda for this. So I'm not in favor of that. I want to hold a meeting on these.
Okay. Well, we have Tom Skorowski before us, who can speak to why he's requesting suspension, and then...
That's fine, Mr. President. It's the rest of the agenda that I...
Okay. So, okay. So, do we have, do we already have Tom with us, FATV? Bring him in.
Motion for suspension of the rules of 205-20?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. We'll do this by roll call vote. This is on 205 and 20620. Madam Clerk.
Councillor Boishman?
Yes.
Councillor Kucher?
Yeah.
Councillor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Squalia?
Yay.
Councillor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kuschemerik?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
205 and 20620 are before us, and I'll ask Mr. Skorowski to speak to both, if he could.
Sure. Can you hear me? Okay.
We can hear you.
Great. Thank you, councillors, and good evening. The item before you with the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program is a program through Mast dot with the intent to allow for shared use of our streets and parking lots throughout the Commonwealth to aid and enhance commerce, mobility, and large events using our streets and parking lots. Our original intent in submitting this application was to actually secure a stage at Riverfront Park because we've had a great need for larger events, whether it's movies in the park or concerts or what have you, and haven't had the venue for it. And the stage idea has long been a goal of the Friends of Riverfront Park. So we saw that as a good opportunity and tried to fit it within this program by, you know, basically saying that we were closing down Commercial Street to accommodate a larger event venue for the pavilion. I say all that to say that that's not the direction we are now heading because we heard from Mast dot that they would fund everything we applied for but the stage, and then put out a press release that day saying we're closing down Commercial Street. So I just wanted to, you know, put everyone at ease to a degree. We're not going to be closing down Commercial Street through this program, but Mast dot was generous enough to allow us to basically take this $53,000 grant award and reshape it to fit our needs, again, to encourage more commerce and outdoor events, both downtown and throughout the city. So what we did in the end, instead of doing one big project, we just have sort of a list of different items that we'll be purchasing, both to support the city, Reimagine North the Main, and businesses for different events and commerce downtown. So things like picnic tables, trash bins, a few parklets, a large tent, portable heaters, which are going to be really important in the winter and the later fall months. So the reason I'm asking for a suspension of the rules, and I don't like to do this, and I know I'm also asking for it on another item today, is the grant program actually requires that you spend down within 30 days of receiving it. It's supposed to be predicated on a rapid response. So that's what I'm really aiming to do here today is get this funding approved so we can go ahead and work on procuring the necessary supplies to get some events and business activity happening on our streets and parking lot areas.
Councillor Dean Natale, I see in the chat, was that a previous request to speak?
It was.
Okay. Next, we have Councillor Green. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Sowaski.
Hello.
My only, it's just a question, maybe a comment, I'm not sure, but as it's written, this is in response to the COVID-19 crisis?
Correct.
So are we addressing just the fact that we're in a COVID-19 crisis, or is this going to help secure us for promoting business long after our pandemic is over?
I think it's a little bit of both. And, you know, honestly, we were a bit hesitant in submitting this grant request to Mast dot, just given all the really pressing concerns and issues that the business community is facing. We felt like our time was better served, you know, getting funding out through grants and through our loan programs and all of that. And we weren't hearing as much about the needs for these kind of things, at least at scale, to put in an application. So, you know, that's why we ultimately went for the pavilion so we could have sort of an idea, you know, where we had larger venue for events and, you know, a place for the farmer's market to really, to create gatherings for outdoor events in the future. And so when all that got denied by the state, we kind of went back to the drawing board. And we honestly thought for a while, well, we want to make sure we're meeting the business community where they're at. We want to make sure we're really meeting a core community need. So we thought about, you know, if we can't actually do something that's going to support local business and support local events, we were going to turn the grant money back, to be quite honest with you. But I think ultimately, we decided things like portable heaters, things like parklets where you can have more outdoor seating and parking spaces, things like picnic tables and other sort of outdoor seating elements will be really nice, hopefully, for this small period that we have left in fall. But yeah, I mean, moving forward as well, right? I think we all love outdoor events and outdoor commerce and eating outdoors and dining al fresco and all that. So we're really, we thought this would be a good opportunity to build up, you know, a critical mass of supplies to help us do placemaking and events moving forward above and beyond this crisis, which hopefully will be leaving us soon enough.
All right. So I just want to make sure that I understand that there will be more than one portable heater or potentially a few benches or seating arrangements and potentially a large event tent so that many businesses, upon request or submit an application, would be able to utilize these items that, quite frankly, are the city of Pittsburgh's property under the direction of community development and foster good business relationships with our business community?
Absolutely.
Great. I'm super excited to hear that. Thank you so much for all your work.
You're welcome.
And we have next, Councillor Squalia to speak.
Thank you. I really appreciate that you were able to retool this grant because this is a good opportunity from Mast dot in response to this COVID crisis. And so I was just wondering, movable barriers, you know, for when we close off the streets. We often use large vehicles from the DPW or those kinds of things as barriers. Do you plan on maybe purchasing something that's a little more easy to set up by the DPW or the Police Department?
So we originally, when our goal was to close down Commercial Street, we did put that within the scope, water-filled barriers. And now we're kind of just having a bit of a back and forth with DPW and with our Recreation Director as to whether that would be a good fit the next time around. I think it, I suspect it might be, even if we're not going to close down Commercial Street because there will, again, we want to build sustainability. And it's a matter of if Mast dot would allow it within their scope, because we're basically telling them we're no longer closing off the road. So they might ask why we need them. I've seen some communities use those water-filled barriers as a parklet in its own right and just sort of surrounding some parking spots. And perhaps that could be our justification. I certainly think there's a need. You know, if I could have applied for this grant a year from now, I would have done something more bold with Main Street or Boulder Drive because I actually think closing down either of those roads will be really critical, thinking ahead. But obviously, we're not going to do that when we're about to make some pretty dramatic changes on those roads. But in the event that we did in the future, it would be nice to have some water-filled barriers. So, you know, I think this, the scope is a bit fluid. I think if it's something that DPW would be interested in, it's something we could certainly support within this program.
Something like, for example, on Cully Street, where we closed off the end of Cully Street to allow slatteries, use of dining and crossing the street, something like that would be appropriate for this grant, correct?
I think it could be.
And so another question about, you said trash cans, those black trash cans in the downtown, are we planning on replacing those with similar and also adding more downtown? Is that a grant?
That'll be a conversation with DPW. I mean, certainly, as we're doing all this broader work with Main Street Boulder Drive, we're going to have some of those components built into it. I know, for the purposes of this grant, we are thinking particularly about Mill Street and having both trash and recycling receptacles there, which meets a clear and pressing need at the moment. But certainly, there are some trash cans throughout the downtown that, you know, we could, we could use replacement. Again, it's sort of tying it into the COVID element, the scope of the grant.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
So with that, councillors, 20620, which Mr. Skorowski just spoke to is before us. I'd entertain a motion.
Councillor Boishman?
You have the floor.
Tom, did you say how big the tent was going to be?
Well, we've got a couple of different tents that we've eyed up. A few are just kind of your standard 10 by 10 vinyl pop-ups, and those are just three or four. Those might be for smaller events or to support vendors for our farmer's market. Then we are eyeing up some much larger ones that, I think the biggest one we looked at was 17 by 65 feet. So big tent, you know, that could accommodate larger events.
I know. Who's going to maintain all this stuff?
Some of it will be maintained by the city. Some of it, through an MOU with Reimagine North the Main, will, you know, provide those, that equipment, but then with the understanding that there would be a shared ownership throughout. It was determined that DPW didn't necessarily want all of the equipment. So we wanted to create a flexible mechanism for a shared opportunity with downtown partners.
And you're saying, going back to Councillor Green's statement, that if a business wants to use the tent, they'll be able to use the tent?
For larger events, yeah. I certainly, that's the intent. We want to make sure this is used.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Before I know, councillor has made a motion to approve 205 and 206, but I know our clerk was looking to speak briefly to 20520. Councillor Van Hazinga, if you'd be amenable to allowing the clerk to speak. Madam Clerk, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Kuschemerik. I just wanted to draw your attention to 20520 and to let the councillors know that this is a fantastic grant opportunity that is to help bring PPEs for the election workers and to really help to make the polling locations safe on Election Day. It's so important to keep the voters and the election workers safe, and we're going to do everything we can to do that. And by accepting this grant, it does put some funds in our coffer that will help us to be able to organize things a little better.
Madam Clerk, thank you for your efforts there and everything you're doing to keep both the election workers and our voting residents safe during election season. With that, I have a motion made by Councillor Van Hazinga and a second from Councillor Dean Natale to approve 205 and 20620. We'll do this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Councillor Boishman?
Yes.
Councillor Kucher?
Yes.
Councillor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Squalia?
Yay.
Councillor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kuschemerik?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
207 through 20920, unless there is a motion, alternatively, stand referred to the Finance Committee. And next, we have Orders Other. We have a request for suspension of the rules for both 210 and 220.
210 and 211?
Thank you. 210 and 21120. I have a motion and second, suspension of the rules on 210 and 21120. Madam Clerk.
Councillor Boishman?
We're asking for suspension of the rules?
Correct.
All right. I'll do it.
Councillor Kucher?
Yes.
Councillor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Squalia?
Yay.
Councillor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kuschemerik?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
First, 21020, I'll ask our clerk to speak first, and then Councillor Dean Natale with a follow-up question. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councillors, this is the order for the election, so I would like to go ahead and move forward with that in order to advertise the election warrant.
And Councillor Dean Natale for the floor.
I just had a brief question for the clerk. I've been getting a lot of questions from voters about when to expect their mail-in ballot if they've already applied. Do you have any idea when, for those who have already applied, when do we think we're going to be sending out the ballots early, earliest date, ballpark? I don't know if you even know, but...
Thank you for that question. I'd just like to let everyone know, we just received the ballots, and they were going to be going out as soon as we can put them in the mail. We received about 6,500 requests, though I just ask everyone to be patient.
Next, we have Councillor Squalia.
Thank you. And I heard today that we have a new ballot-only box outside of city offices that people can, instead of voting in person on November 3, they can put their mail-in ballot in that box. What's the deadline to put that mail-in ballot in the box?
Okay. So the last day to receive a mail-in ballot in the drop box is the actual Election Day, 11/3. We recommend that people don't wait that long, only because it takes time to process them and send them out to the polls. So we invite people to vote them as soon as they get them and bring them back to us as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Is there a time, just a follow-up, is there a time of day that is a formal cutoff, or is it at 8:00 PM?
It is at 8:00 PM.
Very good. So councillors, if we could take these individually to, 21020 is before us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 21020. We'll do this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Councillor Boishman?
Yes.
Councillor Kucher?
Yes.
Councillor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Squalia?
Yay.
Councillor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Councillor Zarella? I'm sorry. President Kuschemerik?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Next, 21120. And councillors, I'm going to recuse myself because my relationship with the entity requesting 21120, and I'd ask that Vice President Walsh take over for this item.
Thank you, Mr. President. 21120, an order authorizing Mayor Stephen Dean Natale to execute a housing development incentive program tax increment exemption agreement between the city of Pittsburgh and Pelletier Properties as outlined in the enclosed order, re-18 Blossom Street, reference petition number 191-20. And I believe that Mr. Skorowski would like to speak to this?
Or just? Yes. Just briefly. Okay, great. Thank you. So 21120 is just an order that formalizes a petition that came through and was voted on unanimously by this council previously. I think it just came through as a petition, not an order. It needs to be an order for the mayor to officially execute the tax increment exemption agreement for 18 Blossom Street, the apartments there that Nick Pelletier is working on. I asked for a suspension of the rules because I don't feel it necessarily serves a pressing public purpose to continue this for another meeting. And further still, it's holding back Mr. Pelletier's application to the state for H-DIP tax credits. In order to apply for the tax credits, he needs to have an executed tax increment exemption agreement, which is why I'm requesting a suspension of the rules.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skorowski. I believe, Councillor Boishman, you are first up to speak.
I got a question for Tom. I want to make sure I understood what I read. He has to own that property for five years. Am I right or wrong?
Correct.
Okay. So he can't sell it. So, all right. I just want to make sure. All right.
Move to approve 21020.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 21120. Thank you. Speaking to the motion, seeing none. And I believe this has to be a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Councillor Boishman?
Yes.
Councillor Kucher?
Yes.
Councillor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green? Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. And I am going to turn the meeting back over to President Kuschmerick.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. You've left me the most difficult part, which is 212 and 21320, both petitions stand referred to their respective committees. And with that, that is the conclusion of this evening's agenda.
Move to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
And second to adjourn, unless there is any objection, we will adjourn by unanimous consent. We are adjourned. Thank you, councilors.